Vermillion City Council Meeting Scheduled for Tuesday, January twenty first at six P M. Will come to order. Can you please call roll?
Taller, Lieber, Price, Holland, Genoine, Helwig, Cheeseman, Murrah, Miracle.
Here. We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the January sixth, twenty twenty five special meeting and the January sixth, twenty twenty five regular meeting? If so, are there any changes or any motions? What's approved by Council Holland? Is there a second? Second by Council Murrah. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item is adoption of the agenda. Does everyone have a chance to review the agenda? If so, is there any changes or adoption of the agenda? What's approved of the agenda by Council Price? Is there a second? Second by Council Genoine. All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Visitors to be heard. For persons addressing the council shall use the microphone at the podium. Please raise your hand to be recognized and go to the podium and state your name and address. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard. Remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. For agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff and any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item. Public testimony will then be closed and topic given to the governing body for action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda item unless a council member moves to allow a person to speak in the unanimous consent of the council. Questions, however, may be directed to a staff or member of the public to the presiding officer at any time. At this moment, are there any visitors to be heard on items not on the agenda? I do believe we have people here to read the Black History Month proclamations from the Human Relations Commission and the Cultural Wellness Coalition. When you go ahead and come on up, please state your name and address for the record and you can go ahead and read your proclamation.
Hi, my name is Bennet Clary.
My name is Ellie Hobbs.
And my name's Hanya.
For National Black History Month, we proudly celebrate the vast contributions of black people and communities to our country and recognize that black culture, narratives, literature, and triumphs are at the core of who we are as a nation. The heart and soul of America is what makes this country unique. We are the only country that is founded on the noble idea that we are all created equal and deserve to be treated with equal dignity throughout our lives. However, it could be, it would be doing a disservice to our country and our founding ideals if we do not confront the hard truths that what this country was founded and shaped on slavery. Whereas, the origins of Black History Month date back to nineteen twenty six when Dr. Carter G. Woodson founded the organization that began as Negro History Week, now known today as the Association for the Study of African American Life and History to recognize the achievements of black Americans and all people of African descent in the United States and.
Whereas, it is imperative that we do not shy away from acknowledging and refusing to forget the dark chapters of this country's legacy of slavery, violence, and institutional and structural racism that African Americans have endured in the past and will continue to confront today. It is essential that we pay tribute to African Americans who endured the brutal shackles of oppression, courageously risked their lives for justice, fought a fight that seemed insurmountable, and persistently and continually strive to, strive to fight for equality, chasing the promised American dream. And whereas, throughout history, black and African Americans have yearned to be recognized as integral parts of the American identity, a sentiment reflected in the black community's commitment to fight in every American war that shaped the nation's freedom and rights. Their legacy is one of unwavering love for thy country, selfless sacrifice for the greater good of our nation, and an enduring hope that more perfect union. And whereas, this year's theme is African Americans and the Arts, infused with African Caribbean and black American lived experiences. Throughout history, the black community has used art as a tool for preserving history and community memory, a practice integral to our nation's growth and development. Over centuries, these contributions have often been denied or downplayed by Eurocentric intellectuals. And whereas, in the face of these historical truths, it is a moral imperative that each of us learn about, shed light on, and condemn the inhumanities of injustices and inequalities that black and African Americans have prevailed through and.
Whereas, to be silent in voice and complacent in action becomes betrayal and complicit in this inhumanity and injustice. And now therefore, we, the Vermillion Human Relations Commission, Black Student Union, and the Cultural Wellness Coalition, designate this month of February twenty twenty five as National Black History Month. We call upon each one of us to remember today that there is no American history without black history, and we take time each February to commemorate that truth. Today, we shall be reminded of the quote by Amelia Boynton Robinson, an American activist who was a leader in the civil rights movement who said, "You can never know where you're going unless you know where you've been." This National Black History Month, may we not only remember where we have been, but recognize that our only way forward is in unity together.
Thank you. Our next item for visitors to be heard is also a proclamation for the Lions Club's seventy-fifth anniversary proclamation. Recognize the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Vermillion Lions Club. Whereas, the Vermillion Lions Club was chartered on February twenty first nineteen fifteen, has demonstrated the Lions Club model we serve since the time in numerous ways. And whereas, the Vermillion Lions Club supports children and needy members of the community with vision and hearing needs through providing preschool vision screenings, free eye exams, and corrective lenses and hearing aid assistance. The Vermillion Lions Club also collects used eyeglasses for their community for reuse around the world and contributes to the Lions Club International Foundation's Site First Program, which works to eradicate blindness. And whereas, Vermillion Lions Club serves our youth through scholarships, recreation, junior achievement, Special Olympics, boys' state and girls' state sponsorship in the Vermillion Public Schools. And whereas, the Vermillion Lions Club fights hunger with supporting the annual Christmas Food Box Program, Backpack Program for schoolchildren, and community food pantry, as well as serving as Meals on Wheels and Community Welcome Table Volunteers. And whereas, the Vermillion Lions Club supports our community through helping organizations such as the Vermillion Police Department, Vermillion Fire and EMS Department, Vermillion Public Library, W H O V Museum, the Austin Whitmore House, National Music Museum, Main Street Center, South Dakota Public Broadcasting, the Bluffview Cemetery, and Sanford Hospice. And whereas, the Vermillion Lions Club has helped bring about physical assets for all of us to enjoy, such as the Lions Park and the Clay County Veterans Memorial. Now therefore be resolved that the governing bodies, City of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim February twenty first, twenty twenty five, as the celebration of the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Vermillion Lions Club in Vermillion, South Dakota, and call upon the residents of the great city to join in commemorating this event and thankful for the Vermillion Lions Club for their numerous contributions to the community. Are there any more visitors to be heard on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the next agenda item. It will be public hearings. We have a special permit to exceed permissible noise levels, no more than fifty percent, for the concert featuring U S D's Vocal Jazz on Tuesday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Nick?
On the University of South Dakota Music Department has applied for a special permit to exceed allowable noise levels at Radigan Plats on Tuesday, April fifteenth, from five to six thirty P M. The map indicates the stage will be on West Main Street facing towards the east. The application, map of the area, and notice of hearing are attached. The city council will need to determine if the event is in a suitable location with appropriate facilities during the allowable time and if the applicant can demonstrate with the public benefit of the event. There is a street closure request relating to this permit as item eight A on the agenda. The organizers have already paid the twenty-five dollar fee for this, and administration recommends approval of the special noise permit unless information is prevented, presented at the public hearing indicating there would be problems related to the noise.
Thank you, Nick. Are there any visitors to be heard on this? Counsel for discussion? Motions? Motion approved by Council Holland and second by Council Price. Any air discussion? All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. We'll have a first reading of ordinance fifteen twenty eight. Title fifteen, land usage, reference of zoning regulations from R three to general business in the area of the Jack Powell Edition. Jose?
Thank you. So the Vermillion Chamber and Development Company, owners of the land, have requested that the city rezone lots one and two, block one of the Jack Powell Edition from the R three residential district to the G B General Business District. The properties to the east of that parcel is already, is zoned in the G I General Industrial District. That's Polaris right there. South, this is where the L E C is being constructed right now. That's already zoned. G B, General Business, and the remainder of the land within the Jack Powell Edition would be remain, would remain as R three residential district. Just to note, this right here is the city limits. North of that would be in the J J Z A. And all of that right now adjacent to the city would be Zone A one Agricultural. The property was annexed, the entire Jack Powell was annexed into the city in July twenty twenty three. And the area being discussed was rezoned into the R three residential district back in January twenty twenty four. The zoning these lots into the G B General Business District has been the plan since the beginning of the Jack Powell Edition or discussions. Definitely since the area was plotted back in April twenty twenty four. The intent of these two lots was to provide space for commercial development in a prominent corner of the city, such as Highway fifty and Highway nineteen. The item was considered by the city's planning and zoning commission at their January thirteenth meeting. At that meeting, the commission voted unanimously seven to zero to recommend the city council adopt the rezoning of this part, these two parcels. The city council has been asked to hold a public hearing on this item. Staff and the city's planning and zoning commission recommend that the previously described area be rezoned from the R three residential district to the G B General Business District, and that the city council advance ordinance fifteen twenty eight for consideration and a final determination at a second reading on February third.
Thank you, Jose. Any visitors to be heard? Counsel for discussion? Motions? Motion to advance, second read by Council Murrah and second by Council Helwig. Any other discussion on this? All in favor to advance, signify by saying aye. Post say nay. Thank you. Thank you. Next item we have for old business, second reading of ordinance fifteen twenty seven. Reference garbage and trash collection to amend language provided for a fine set by resolution.
Thank you. Late last year, we had a situation where a garbage hauler was cited for collecting garbage before the approved start time. And the company was cited for it, but the challenge with our code was that it clearly established that the start times would be established for a resolution, but it did not provide that the city council could set a fine for violating the ordinance. And so, what is before you tonight with ordinance fifteen twenty seven is to add language to that section of city code, which would basically allow the city council to establish a fine for violating the garbage hauling section, that is, collecting on the day that's not approved by resolution or collecting garbage before the appropriate start time established by a resolution. Later on in your agenda, you'll have a resolution to consider a fine. You can set that fine if this is indeed approved with second reading. At this point in time, this is only to add the language, which would allow the city council to establish a fine via adoption of a resolution. With the second reading of all ordinances, a roll call vote is required. We do recommend approval of the second reading of ordinance fifteen twenty seven.
Thank you, John. Any visitors to be heard? Counsel for discussion? Council Holland? Mike?
I understand the time, time limitations and when they should start. That makes sense. But I don't understand why they can't change a day if there's something preventing them from doing it the day they normally do.
Sure, and the resolution that was adopted many years ago does provide, let's see, there are a couple. If a city reads, if a city recognized holiday falls on one of these days, the commercial collectors may collect on Tuesday or Saturday of that week. Where our city administration is authorized to extend landfill hours and days of collection in order to facilitate these restrictions. So there are some latitude. I know a number of years back, we had a scenario where one of our haulers had a garbage truck that broke down and as a single truck that that company had, they did ask to go an additional day or change their day for a period of time till they could get a backup truck. So we've worked with them to make that accommodating. It's just to, to try to provide a little more structure with just the, for residential collection of Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday in the community. Businesses can be picked up the other days.
So they can do another days with our permission?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any discussion by council? Is there a motion? Motion approved by Council Holland. Is there a second? Second by Council Cheeseman. Move to the roll call machine. Unite yeas, zero nays. Motion carries. That'll conclude old business. Next would be new business, a request to close Market Street from West Main Street to the alley between West Main and Kidder on April fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Jack?
Thank you. Yes, the U S D Music Department did submit a street closure request for April fifteenth from five P M. to six thirty P M. The street closure request is south Market Street. If you can get it pulled up here, Dan. From West Main Street to the alleyway between Kidder and Main Street on the north end here, just in case any cars do come out of the alleyway. The intent for this is that they'll be hosting a spring concert on the Radigan Plats that Tuesday, April fifteenth, from five to six thirty P M. It is free and open to the public, and the street closure allows a little bit more room and access for any participants, hosts, attendees to go to the event. Police, fire, EMS have all been notified, and they did not have any concerns about this street closure. Administration recommends approval.
Thank you, Jack. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Any discussion by council? Council Genoine?
Do they have a rain date?
They did not provide a rain date.
Guess not. The show must go on. It's banned. It's not, there's no singing. Only question, have they expected seventy-five participants? Is this, is this enough space for them? This is all, obviously, the only request is, I know what the, the Radigan of the Plats, Thursday and the Plats, we include part of Main Street on there. Is there any concern with overcrowding the section that we have?
I guess I didn't really discuss that with the applicant. It was more so just so people could set up their chairs and stuff in, in the street there to, to attend the event.
Sure.
As well as them setting up for the event, in case they have a trailer or trucks, whatever they need to haul in, so.
Any questions? Motions? Motion approved by Council Genoine and second by Council Price. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item, we have a final plot for the lots for the Jolly Edition. Jose?
Thank you. The city submitted a final plat as the owner of the land. Sorry, the area to be final plotted is roughly three and a half acres in size. And it's bounded to the north by a couple houses, to the east by Linden Avenue, to the south by Maple Street, and to the west by South University Street. This area here that's going to be plotted, our final plot, it would be where Jolly School is currently located. The intent of the plot is to set the actual parcels or lots to be sold in the future. There would be thirteen rest, single-family residential lots, and a lot fourteen here would be a park, which amenities and, and scope, I guess, of what, how the park would be used has not been set yet. This area was rezoned into the Jolly P D D back in November twenty twenty three, and shortly thereafter, covenants were created for this particular area. The covenants set the type of housing that would be allowed within this, this, the thirteen lots. Staff did review the final plan and found that it complies with all the code provisions, except for the right-of-way width along Maple Street. The subdivision ordinance requires that right-of-ways be at least sixty-six feet in width. In this instance, Maple Street was originally constructed on a thirty-foot right-of-way. And in the mid-nineties, the school dedicated an additional fourteen feet, making the right-of-way such forty-four feet wide. Because Maple's, Maple Street is not planned to be widened, and because the city will be owning the park to the north of Maple Street, staff believes that the right-of-way width along Maple should remain forty-four feet and not be increased to sixty-six. This item was considered by the city's planning commission at their January thirteenth meeting. That meeting, the commission had several questions regarding the size of the park and the amenities that would go to the park. In addition to that, the, there was some, some conversation regarding the width of the existing and proposed Maple Street right-of-way. After a brief discussion, the commission recommended seven to zero. The city council approved the plot as presented. Staff and the city's planning commission recommend the city council approve the final plot as presented.
Thank you, Jose. Any visitors to be heard? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Council Holland?
North end of the lot of the property is an alleyway. Does that go away?
It's not an alleyway, actually. That's just part of the school. It's within this school's property. The school uses it. But it would, whatever you want to call it, it would go away. Yes. That would be where lot one and lot seven are.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Jose, looking at this, are these lots same size or?
No, the lots vary in size.
No, I'm sorry, same, to the existing ones that are to the, to the north.
No, the ones to the north, lots six, the existing ones in College Park Edition, those are, I believe, are forty-four foot wide.
So quite a bit skinnier, it looks like.
The existing ones are skinnier, yes. If, if I may.
Go ahead.
Just, just so you're aware, and I'll, I'll just pick, I believe, the burbaks here. They own lots five and six. So even though they're skinnier, they, they might own one or one and a half. So their house is a pretty big house, considering the lot size. But that's why the lot sizes that we're proposing are different in width, just because we were hoping to have a mix of housing styles in there. And we were pretty certain that you can fit houses within those lots, considering that there's houses already existing within parcels of that width or smaller.
That's why I just wanted to make sure that the houses aren't going to be right on top of each other, basically.
They're going to be closer than, they're going to be similar in style as what you see in that neighborhood, which are closer. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Council Cheeseman?
When do you expect to begin the deconstruction of the school?
So we are currently soliciting bids for the asbestos abatement. After that's let out by the, or awarded by the city council on February third, then we're going to be, once we have a schedule from the contractor doing the abatement, we're going to be setting out the contract for the demolition of the school proper. So the, the way that we're doing it is that we're going to abate the asbestos. Once that's done, then we're demolish the, the building and remove all the concrete asphalt that's in that part, in those parcels. And then we will do some very minor infrastructure improvements along Maple and Linden. And then we'll have everything set for selling the parcels.
Do you have a particular date?
As far as?
As far as starting to construct, build a lot, build the houses?
Hopefully by the end of the, I'm going to say by fall this year, we should be all done with everything. It's, I wish I could tell you that, yeah, it's going to happen September third, but I don't have a date just because the schedule is some, it's fluid to some degree, because I don't know when the contractors are going to be done, so.
Suppose the good news is there's no roads that got to be put in.
No, there's no roads.
Council Genoine?
Um, there, will there be any work done in the right-of-way on, on university? You mentioned Linden and Maple, but not university?
Sorry, I meant, instead of Maple, I meant university. So there is going to be some, there's a bump out over on Linden, and the bump, and part of the bump out on university will be removed and the, the boulevard widened. And then in addition to that, along Linden, we're going to be putting water services and sewer services as well. And then, actually, that, that would be it. And then we're going to be removing a portion of the sidewalk along Jolly, or sorry, along university as well. Right now, the sidewalk along there is pretty wide, so we're going to remove it where the boulevard would be. So it mimics, or it follows that five-foot sidewalk that you have north of Jolly.
Council Price?
I know I had seen them. You mentioned the covenants that were established. Where do those live? Are they available?
They live at the courthouse.
Where can they be accessed?
They can be accessed at the courthouse, at the register of deeds. So they are, that, that's where all covenants are filed. So in case I were to buy a house over here in ten years, I can, the covenants are automatically placed with your title. So anybody can go and get the covenants over there. You buy a property, whatever it is, and it comes with your title.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I think with Council Price, also looking, is there any accessibility by the public, say, online or something like that?
We do not have them online, but, I mean, if, if necessary, I believe we have a copy of them, considering they're a city. So I should be able to get a copy if necessary.
So basically, if anybody needs them, they can contact City Hall and we can provide a copy.
Prefer that they go to the courthouse, I would say, but yeah.
Or go to the courthouse. Thank you.
Because that's official copy.
Sure. Council Genoine?
Would, would they not be in the minutes from when we approved those?
There would also be in the minutes.
It's like December of twenty-three?
December of twenty-three, I think we approved those?
I think it was, yeah.
So Jose is correct. There would not be the official filed copy, but they would be the document that was approved by the city council.
Yeah.
That way. I would just, if I may, add a comment, not so much about this part of it, but, you know, we hear about the asbestos abatement. And obviously, a building built in the fifties has some of that. But all the windows on the west side of the building, and partially on the south side, and some on the east side, any of those windows that weren't replaced that are part of the original building in nineteen fifty, all of those are part of that asbestos abatement. So, correct?
Yep.
And so, yes, there's some tiles, there's some pipes, but all of those have to come out as that first step in, in setting up the work. So it's, you had a contractor here from out of state today. It's a sizable project to abate the hazardous materials, as it's referred to, before we actually get to the demolition. So that, we've heard one say they could do it in a week. Whenever they start, that building is going to start looking a lot different, because all those window panels along the university side are going to go away.
Yep. There's, it's, there's a considerable, there's not a lot of items that have asbestos, but it's, it's a, I shouldn't even, we have some pipe insulation and some fittings and the windows. So it's just three things that, if you want to consider it, that have to be removed through asbestos abatement, but there's just a lot of each individual item. There's about, possibly about nine hundred feet of insulation that have to be removed. And there's about a hundred and twenty-seven windows, if I remember correctly, that have to be removed. So it's a, it's a big amount, but it's just three things that essentially have to be removed. The glazing does.
The gla, oh, the glazing is.
Yep, and. Yep, the glazing has asbestos.
Any other questions? Mike?
So when these windows come out?
As soon as I have a contract.
No, no, no. When they come out?
Yeah.
How do we prevent stupid people?
So part of the, part of the contract, yeah. No, we thought about that. Part of the contract is actually to, to board up the, the space where the windows used to be. So my hope is that, that it's boarded up, but that, that it's only boarded up for, at the most, a month. Because I don't want it to be boarded up for six months. No.
Any other que, any other questions? Katie, you get that for minutes' sake. Okay. Council Cheeseman?
So you talked about the park at the south end there. So is it, you're, are you thinking like a children's park, a place to play? What about parking down there?
So I'll talk about the parking. So, so the, the, right now, there's that parking lane on the north side of Maple. So that parking lane will remain. So there's going to be some parking for the small park along there. And then on university, there's also a small, there's, right now, there's a long parking lane all the way from Maple. Maple almost to the north of, to lot one over here. But we're going to probably keep everything that's, that just butts up to lot six. So there's going to be parking along the north side of Maple and then along here as well. Otherwise, it's just street parking anywhere else or maybe. As far as the amenities that you might have at the park, I don't think they have been finalized yet, but I know there's been discussions of possibly having a, a small playground, what age group, I'm not exactly sure. And then maybe, if I remember correctly, maybe a, a shelter. Yep, a small shelter. And the shelter, or there might be another item, but something in there might be pertain to the actual historic Jolly School, if you want to call it that. So there, we might use bricks to do the shelter from the old school or something of that sort. The items haven't been finalized yet as far as what's going to go in the park.
I believe that question would be for our parking director would probably have more information on that.
I hope so, yeah.
Any, any question or comments for reference to the plotting of the Jolly Edition? Seeing none, is there a motion? Motion to approve by Counselor General, is there a second? Second by Counselor Toller, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item would be a resolution to establish the fine for violating city code section fifty-two twelve that we just did earlier.
That is absolutely correct. Just ordinance fifteen twenty-seven, which you opted second reading of just a few moments ago, will insert language in the city code that a fine would be established via adoption of a resolution for collecting garbage on a day not permitted or before the designated start time. So what we have included in the packet are two different options. One is the first resolution probably that you'll come across has a fine of fifty-six dollars plus fifty-six fifty, fifty-six dollars and fifty cents plus the court costs. There was a little bit of discussion last time if you wanted that to escalate with subsequent violations. So that has a first time that's offended within a year is fifty-six dollars and fifty cents plus court costs. A second fine would be a hundred and six dollars and fifty cents plus the court costs. You might ask why it's not quite double that. We went with, within our city code, there are a lot of different fines that police officers, when they cite someone for, fifty-six fifty is the most common one and then a hundred and six dollars and fifty cents is kind of the second most common for violations that are, if you will, a step up from that. So we kind of mimicked that language in there with respect to the option of charging more. It is entirely up to the discretion of what the city council wants to set for that fine. The only limitation would be state statute does limit you to, can be any more than five hundred dollars. So between zero and, I'd say, one dollar and five hundred dollars would be what you would want that fine to fall. So we gave you a couple of different options there, but certainly that is open to your latitude as to what would be the appropriate fine. We just use fine amounts that are very similar to what is out there today. I would note that the recent violation was very close to the fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. Again, it was set by a magistrate judge. It was fifty-four dollars plus the court costs. Fifty-six fifty is by far and away the most common fine amount that we have, so that's why we went with that for a suggestion.
Thank you, Johnny. Any visitors to be heard? Seeing none, move to counsel for discussion.
Court cost, which we don't establish, that's set by the state, is seventy-two dollars and fifty cents currently.
Counselor Cheeseman?
Is this a, is this an ongoing problem?
We, I will say that we periodically, I'll say at least once a year, will get a complaint about starting, someone, a garbage hauler starting collection before the designated start time. We believe with some of the recent changes, we've clarified that is in residential zoning versus sometimes a garbage hauler would say that, well, an apartment house is really a business, so while it's in residential zoning, it doesn't apply. So we've clarified that to say, in residential districts, here's your start time. If it's in a business district, here's your start time, here are your days of the week. We think that's helped. So we periodically get these complaints, but I believe the one that we had last quarter of last year is the first time someone's actually cited for it. And it was, I believe, if I remember my conversation with the police chief, it was the officer warned this company, this driver, and then they were doing it again the next week, and so they were cited for it that way.
Counselor Toller?
What is the start time to garbage collection?
Let me look back here, I have that resolution.
Six AM.
Okay.
For residential. Before that, for commercial is five AM, if I recall correctly? It's been a few years.
Yep, you're absolutely right. It is six AM for residential collection, five AM for business collection in business districts, the general business, central business district.
I know, I know from my experience, usually that late at night, it was, it was more of an issue exactly that is going into the residential areas, picking up, they'd start at the resident, or the commercial areas and then if they're ahead of schedule, they'll move right into the residential areas and then that's when it would be problematic. More often, it's more self-initiated by the officer where they seen the issue and addressed it and without having to cite or anything like that. And I think that's one of the reasons why it probably wasn't complained about as much, but that's from my experience and seeing in the past in my prior life. Any discussion? We have two resolutions here, any discussion on either one or, or a different one altogether? Counselor Lieber?
Just on the second resolution, which says fifty-six, within a calendar year, fifty-six fifty and each events thereafter is a hundred and six. So if that hundred and sixing continues, if they do it the following year, it's still a hundred and six, or is it start over again at fifty-six again each year?
It would start over again at fifty-six fifty each year, yes.
And it's calendar year, not offense year. Any other questions? Comments? I guess in looking at it, I think our sidewalk, are, are, those are enhanced, correct? If you, what are some of the statutes or the ordinances that have any enhanced penalties?
So you're correct. The code violations, so snow removal, weed tagging, grass tagging, getting too long, that has a scaled system where it starts over each calendar year. Those two build on each other because they're typically, if they're not shoveling their sidewalk, they're probably not mowing, and so they tend to build on each other. Off the top of my head, that's, Jack, do you remember from our fee schedule? Animals, yes.
So the, the reason why I ask, it seems to be more like more of the nuisance things, get the enhanced schedule on that. And I think this would fall under the nuisance because, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason why this is is because of the noise level at that time of night with people sleeping. They say that's a nuisance, so I would, my opinion is to venture more towards that enhanced schedule as it progresses to get worse, if it progresses to get worse. Any thoughts on that? Counselor Price?
Seems consistent with what we're doing in other similar areas, so, I mean, I would move approval.
The second one with the enhanced?
Yes.
So there's a motion to approve the, the second resolution with the enhanced schedule. Is there a second on that? Second by Counselor Toller. Is there any other discussion on this? Motion on the floor for the enhanced schedule resolution, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item, well, we have no bid openings, it would be city manager's report.
Thank you. Just one upcoming meeting before your next city council meeting, and that is our bid board number one. Bid stands for Business Improvement District. This board meets about three times a year, four times a year. They work with the two-dollar-per-night occupied hotel room fee that exists for tourism promotion. They are meeting Wednesday, January twenty-ninth at four PM here in the Powell Conference Room at City Hall. And then included with your packet were four different raffle notifications. It is raffle season prep time, I guess, and so to help get these into the record, the process is they file them, administration can approve them, but we report them back at the next city council meeting, so they're entered into the minutes. So here we go on your raffle opportunities coming up in the community. USD Student Occupational Therapy Association, they are selling raffle tickets at one for ten dollars or three for twenty-five dollars, February third to March third of this year, and the drawing is going to be held on March fourth. The prizes are a Ninja Creamy, a hundred-dollar Amazon gift card, and a water bottle and gift cards, and the proceeds from this raffle are used for educational classes and conference costs for the Occupational Therapy Student Association. Vermillion After Prom, they are selling twenty-dollar raffle tickets from January twenty-sixth to February ninth of this year. Each raffle ticket is numbered and then it matches up with a square on a Super Bowl board. So the intersection of the last digit of the score for each one of the two teams in the Super Bowl, at the end of each quarter, will determine the winner of either the hundred-dollar, hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred, or two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar prize. And the proceeds for this raffle will be used for food prices and entertainment related to the two thousand twenty-five after-prom event at Vermillion High School. St. Agnes has their classic event coming up on January thirty-first, so they have two different raffles that were submitted. The first one is they're selling five-dollar raffle tickets during the classic event and the prize is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars in porkloins. The raffle proceeds from this raffle and the other one I'll mention here in a second will be used to cover technology and other maintenance and expenses related to St. Agnes School. The second raffle, they are selling twenty-dollar raffle tickets again during their classic event. And that twenty-dollar raffle ticket, if you are the lucky winner, then it gives you a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar credit towards a silent or a live auction event that evening during the classic. And again, the raffle proceeds go to the same cause, technology, and other maintenance and expenses. That's all the information I have.
Thank you, John. And just for a second, knowing a Ninja Creamy is a countertop ice cream maker, so if you win that, we can bring it to City Hall and we'll all have ice cream.
I'll get more people at the meetings.
Thank you. Next item would be the invoice, they're going to have a chance to review the bills. If so, are there any questions, comments, or motions? Counselor Toller?
Quick question. Katie or John, twenty-eight thousand for the blessed bathroom, is that project completed?
I don't think that it is right now.
Not quite?
I think that it's up there, but I don't think it's functioning yet.
What I had numbers that?
Sixty-five?
Got it, yep. So is, that's just the shell, the construction company that was building that, so now, I'm assuming?
I believe, isn't that for the concrete block?
The concrete blocks.
Concrete, it is. Yeah, it, it's kind of, if you will, framed out, but it's not completed.
Any other question? Any other questions? Motion? Motion to pay a bill by Counselor Price, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Cheeseman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. There is no consensus agenda today, so all we have left is a motion to adjourn. Motion by Counselor Murray, second by Counselor Lieber, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Meeting adjourned.